The town of Hinton respectfully acknowledges that it is located on the First Peoples' traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the treaties with all First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First step is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda? But I have a motion to the committee agenda. So moved. All in favor? All opposed? Ah, next citizens' minute with council. Thank you very much. This is a chance for you to have your minute with council. There's not really any back and forth, although it might be clarifying questions. It is. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, Mayor and councillors. My name is Beth McCollum. And I'm here to do a women's council. I've been told by administration that one individual voice is not important in this assembly. But many voices make the community. And many communities have been for some time now saying the Maxwell Lake Bridge is a mistake. And have been asking for an option that is more compatible with the Beaver Boardwalk vision. Voices include one minute to councils, letter to the other, letters to council, Facebook discussions, phone calls, and meetings with the administration and councillors. Sometimes correcting a mistake means stopping, backing off, and taking a new direction before moving forward. We are about to add on to the mistake of the bridge by increasing the size of the structure that doesn't belong. And will make it difficult to connect with the rest of the boardwalk. I encourage council to direct administration to provide a solution to the mistake with the bridge. A solution that is compatible with the Beaver Boardwalk vision.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Chris Robler. I am here to say say that you vote the boardwalk. When I walked in today, I couldn't help but notice how beautiful, boy, you walk in, you got the beautiful poles, you have the beautiful laminated wood. How come this didn't, this thing's here, the same architect didn't end up on our premier tourist area? It's the same thing. And your name is going to go on this. Whether we put a plaque, which I've encouraged, or I encourage, we should put a plaque, all your names on the, on the bridge once, once the boardwalk is completed. So this is your legacy. You really want something that stands eight feet up in the air that you can see from anywhere on the boardwalk? That people around the world come to see? This rusted hawk is going to be, it looks, looks awful, but if you rush up against it, you're going to end up with lawn, lawn, taking a cold so laundromat to get it cleaned. It can easily be lowered. We don't have to remove the bridge, just lower it down. You can easily in this town with the history we have, there's got to be beams around somewhere we can put underneath it to shore up the strength. We take those side rails off. Make it a viewing platform. We've got a world-class home builder just right outside of town here. They can build a beautiful rail to match the decor. That's the architecture we have in the ancient way for you. And it'll look very nice. Be something that Hinton and all of you as councillors can be proud of for years to come. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Beth and Chris. I'd in particular like to thank Beth. The town should be thankful that we've got somebody who's qualified, trusted, and respected in our community that has spent all the years you have on Beaver Boardwalk. Thank you. Every successful project needs a champion in amongst the decision makers. And a champion in my books is defined as somebody that actively and publicly demonstrates and announces their support for a project. With that definition, the Beaver Boardwalk has been sorely lacking, and we're poor for it. Time's not over yet. There's still a chance for somebody from admin or council to step forward and fill that role. There's still time, as I said. I trust that every one of you will be at the grand opening of the bridge, publicly declare your support and accountability for the bridge. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And thank you very much for coming, and we do appreciate all the work you do on the boardwalk committee, Beth. Thank you very much. Any clarifying questions? Okay. With that, we'll move on to delegations and presentations. The foothills Recreation Management Association by Brian Hicks.
Thank you. Yes, I'm Brian Hicks. I'm here representing the foothills Recreation Management Association. Right, so why I'm here specifically? Well, I was asked to prepare and present to council following one of your prior or during one of your prior meetings. You've got council beforehand. Anyway, so here I am to make that presentation. The town of Hinton is a partner in the foothills Recreation Management Association and have been since 2011. The town has provided an annual donation of $20,000 to Firma. And I'm here to formally request that the council continue their commitment to support this valuable program. I'm also here, some councillors and citizens may not be aware of the unique partnership that is for my, so I wanted to provide a little information and a little bit of an overview of what that is. Can ask to provide a a program update for the past year. And also looking forward to 2023. And then hopefully answer any questions that may come up. So a brief overview. The program essentially manages 28 recreation sites in west central Alberta near Hinton within the Hinton Wood Products and Edson Forest Products management areas. The operation and maintenance of these sites are funded through an unofficial partnership called the foothills Recreation Management Association. The program is, is very innovative and a unique, unique program. There's nothing else like it. Nothing, sorry. There's nothing like it anywhere else in western Canada. And in that, I'm referring to the, the funding model and also the partnership with the province with regards to the provincial recreation areas themselves. The current partnership includes West Fraser, the town of Hinton, Yellowhead County, and Tech. This table you see on your screen is a list of the campgrounds. There's was that 19 campgrounds and eight trail networks. Anyway, that, that, that is what the, the current, the program currently includes. Some familiar sites that may stand out for folks would be Wild Horse Lake, White Horse Creek, Great Cabin, lots of popular destinations for a lot of local folks. The FRMA mandate, as agreed to by its members in 2011, is to provide safe, affordable, and enjoyable recreation opportunities for the public in and around the communities of Hinton, Edson, Rob, Caddan, and Bureau. To provide indigenous employment, especially meaningful employment for indigenous women. To provide the public with information about partners' core business or organizational priorities. And of course, is our industry of forestry, mining, tourism. To raise awareness with users. That's, sorry, to raise awareness with users, stakeholders, and government that the FRMA partners support recreation opportunities as a part of their commitment to sustainability and community. And obviously, Hinton is, is a community largely supported by resource-based industries. We're all very proud of the work that we do, and this is an opportunity for us to share that with a wider audience to showcase our commitment to these goals. Wes Fraser is the one window manager of the program. Currently, I am the administrator of that program. I'm a planning forester in the Hinton Wood Products Woodlands office. And my contact information is there if anybody feels the need to reach out with questions or inquiries about the program. The management contract for most of the sites is through a formal agreement with Alberta. Currently, Alberta Forestry Parks and Tourism. There are two campground sites included in the program, specifically Tete Lake and Great Cabin, that are not covered by a formal agreement because they're not, they're not provincial recreation area. Alberta is in the process of changing its land use disposition system to a new reservation system. This is largely an administrative adjustment, but will have regulatory implications on the trails associated with the program. Primarily an ability to enforce designated use and impose penalties for non-compliance. The operation and maintenance, maintenance of the sites is subcontracted to Fox Creek Development Association. A brief overview of the funding model for this program began in 2011. Prior to 2011, Wes Fraser was entirely funding the program. Partners have changed over the years, but consistently Wes Fraser, Tech, Town of Hinton, and Yellowhead County have been supporting this program. So essentially, the, the partners provide their, their contribution to Wes Fraser, and then we, we manage those funds. Wes Fraser has entered into contract with Alberta for all the provincial, provincial campgrounds that I mentioned and trail systems. And again, we subcontracted a lot of the, the actual maintenance work to Fox Creek Development. As you'll see from the, the budget numbers, you sorry, the, the cost to operate these sites is heavily subsidized. Upgrades to campgrounds and trails are made based on priorities available and available for funding. Substantial upgrades and significant infrastructure repairs are funded by Wes Fraser through separate initiatives. This table shows the, the funding commitments from partners in 2022. Tech Hall committed $20,000, Wes Fraser. I'll come, I'll come back to that. Yellowhead County committed $30,000. And Hinton had committed 20,000, and campground revenue made up 218,000 of the 419,000 operating costs, which left, which, which Wes Fraser picked up the balance of $130,000. So the total cost for just the site operation and maintenance was just a little over $400,000 for 2022. Partner support is appreciated. It is an important reflection of the overall relationship between us members. As well as operating and maintaining the campground and trail systems, Wes Fraser has not, has has provided millions of dollars for upgrades and improvements to existing provincial and company rec site as well as communication and interpretation tools. Every year, an annual plan is updated and implemented. 2021 saw $250,000 in site upgrades. And 2022 was 284,000. Little bit of information on user nights, and user nights, user nights is essentially each count, each, each E collected per night. And as you can see, in 2021, with all the sites combined, saw about 14,000 user nights. And 2022, a slight decline, but still respectable at almost 13,000. What does that mean to someone like yourselves? Well, we, we've been taking, we, we've completed some user, or some certain user surveys and collected some information. And we see that a large number of the local residents, a large portion of the usage is local residents, but there's also a lot of external interest in these specific ones. So we, we can see from that, that table there roughly where a lot of the guests are coming from. And of course, that translates to economic activity in the town. Benefits of the program are many. Specifically, I pulled out it provides high-quality outdoor recreation opportunities to residents and visitors. It stimulates activity in the local economy, again by resident and visitors. Supporting high-quality sites helps reduce instances of random camping, which impact the area by increased litter and wildfire risk. Provides employment opportunities for, to indigenous community members. Showcases partner commitment to recreation values and partnership goals. And as I have a note on the bottom there, it's a win-win-win-win-win. Just a quick slide on Fox Creek Development. If you're not familiar with that organization, they're located in Hinton. It's an indigenous-owned, not-for-profit organization that provides permanent and seasonal employment opportunities to indigenous community members. Primarily indigenous women. Hinton Wood Products has a long and special relationship with SCBA involved in the organization's inception in 1970, in the 1970s. Among other local programs and projects, SCBA is integral to the success of the FRMA program. Staff are involved in all levels of service, delivery, and operations of the facilities. Looking forward, funding, we're always looking for additional partners. In late 2022, I was approached by representatives of Alberta Parks to consider incorporating an additional five sites into the program. We reviewed those opportunities and decided that really only three of them worked that were compatible with the program that we had going on here. Those are the Fickle Lake, or the Fickle Lake Campground, Wills Group Campground, and the Hornback Provincial Recreation Area. And those will be amended into our current contract with the province. We're obviously intending to continue to provide this valuable outdoor recreation opportunity to residents and visitors. Continue to upgrade as the sites need. The proposed budget for the coming year is, is similar to previous years in the neighborhood of $450,000. With an additional capital upgrade expectation of another $200,000. And of course, your continued support in that effort is always appreciated. So in summary, the FRMA program provides several benefits to the citizens of Hinton from economic activity to quality outdoor recreation opportunities. It helps address many social, economic, and environmental issues facing that community such as Hinton. It is an important part of the overall relationship between each of the FRMA partners. Continued support reflects your commitment to the objectives and values of this this program encompasses. And I took liberty of preemptively answering a few questions here. Specifically, what is the town's contribution actually used for? As I've noted throughout the presentation, the funds are used to pay for the operation and maintenance of, maintenance of sites. Specifically, the town of Hinton contributions go towards funding the entire program. The operation and maintenance of these sites. This funding request is an important reflection of the relationship between the town of Hinton, Wes Fraser, and other FRMA members and the community members that value this program for its many benefits. The capital upgrades are typically funded specifically by Wes Fraser. My understanding is these, sorry. This was in response to a question that I overheard in the reporting of the previous session. Referencing this is being for firewood. It's not exactly, Wes Fraser provides wood for the program at a significant cost to the company. The cost for the contractor to process and distribute the firewood is covered by the FRMA program. Free firewood is an important element to the success of the sites. A key draw for many visitors and helps deter wider impacts and risks of random camping and individuals seating their own firewood. What is the value of the program to the citizens of Hinton? The FRMA sites provide several benefits to the people and citizens of Hinton from an economic boon to, to good quality outdoor recreation opportunities. This program is an opportunity for partners to demonstrate their commitment to these objectives and values known throughout this presentation. This partnership includes the citizens of Hinton through this council. FRMA is not a civic agency. How do we define this relationship? That's true. We're not a civic agency. But this is a unique partnership. I think you as council will have to define what that relationship means to you, but Wes Fraser sees it as an important relationship. As a corporate citizen, Wes Fraser takes great pride in our ability and willingness to invest in and support the communities in, in which we choose to operate. Continuing the effort, our partnership is an important reflection of that relationship.
Thank you for your presentation and thank you for the work that Wes Fraser do on this program. Does anybody have any questions, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And very much for your presentation. In regard to the free firewood, one of the concerns that, that I have been hearing is people are taking the firewood, they're hoarding the firewood. So what steps have been planned, please?
That is a huge problem. My understanding, and I, I witnessed it, I've seen it. The contractor tries to mark the firewood as best they can with paint to at least deter some effect. It's not, it's not overwhelmingly successful. I don't know that there's going to be any way to stop that from happening. I think as long as the firewood is available for people who are looking for it, where they need it, and when they're staying at these sites, I think that's the best we can do. But people are taking it to use in other places. I don't know that there's a lot we can do to stop that. It is unfortunate.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Brian, please.
Um, thanks, Ryan. The, the night stays, it seems like the drop 2022 all happened in Rock Lake. Was something going on out there that they changed that?
I could look into that. I don't know specifically why.
I just thought it fell off the top of your head. You knew what was going on out there.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I think the big thing was 2021 was a really solid year for usage. I think the drop in '22 was probably more of a reflection of normal, because in 2021, all of our sites saw a lot more activity, and that was, and Rock Lake is a pretty desirable location for a lot of people.
Albert.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just had a question regarding the funding, FRMA under table. On the Wes Fraser one, there's a note that the dollar amount is for free dollars only, doesn't include any kind of note. Is the in-kind amount requirement to get free funding, or can you explain that relationship? Essentially, that's my time, the time that I spend administering the program. Appearing here, preparing, preparing information for partners. Responding to the needs of the contract and all of those, essentially, this is what I refer and other individuals in, or within Wes Fraser. Processing payments for the admin staff. Yeah, that's what.
Yes, please.
So the funding that is a pay for free is used for for programming and administration is covered by, that's Wes Fraser's contribution then? Is that kind of, I don't know. Free funding, I'm not sure if they're familiar with how the free funds are set up, but they are funds that Wes Fraser pays. They're, they're a fee that we pay. And a portion of well, all of, I guess, the free funds are available for programs that Wes Fraser wishes to proceed. So. I would that very much.
Any more questions, please? Again, thank you very much for your presentation and the work Wes Fraser does on the program. We all appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Move on to work from administration of technical review plan by our C O.
Thank you. Share to the rest of council. So in front of you in the attachment is a tactical plan that has been reviewed by the senior leadership team. This tactical plan, just maybe as a little bit of background is to be in direct support of council strategic plan, council strategic plan has identified four strategic priorities being a community service, organizational effectiveness, and infrastructure. It has also identified 22 strategic goals that they want to, that council wants to accomplish by that's it. In support of all 26 of those strategic goals, administration has gone and they have developed tactics and actions that are wanted to be required in order to accomplish those goals. So that's what the tactical plan is intended to is intended to accomplish. So the tactical plan was approved originally on October 4th. With the new budgets and with me coming in as C O, we, we, we and the senior leadership team, which was, which had a few new members at the time, we thought it was a good time to do another review of this. So we've included the, the main changes, I've broken them down into three categories. What we have included in here, what has been removed, and what has been completed. So on the included, I won't go through all of these one by one to save everybody's time, but the one major one that I thought I should point out is 3.6 is actually a strategic goal of council that was missed on the initial in the initial tactical plan. And that strategic goal is I counsel administration work to enhance the relationship with the provincial government when we have built tactics around that, or that, that has been missed being to establish a process and strategy for political advocacy that administration aggressively seek opportunities for council to advocate for town priorities. And administration will cultivate an effective working relationship with provincial bureaucrats to advance the town's interests. When it comes to the remove section, I will say that the, the items that have been removed, they haven't been removed because they're not important on the road. They, they have been removed because they have absolutely no relevancy in supporting the strategic goal of council. So, you know, a quick example is looking at new commercial land opportunities, and we, we were trying to really pigeonhole some of the items that we had on our list into the tactical plan, but that's not the intent. The intent is that all of the tactics identified here should be directly supporting the strategic goal of council. So in the remove section, all of these will actually be included in the business plans, departmental business plans. So they're not going to be lost, but they do not support the strategic goals of council as they've been defined by us. The one that I'll say we have more or less eliminated altogether is 1.94 to proceed with next successful E O Y for lands, and that was in regards to the Wutan. We've actually replaced, we've just changed the wording a little bit to make it a little bit more broad to provide us with some options. E O Y is a tool, but we have replaced that with explore opportunities for collaborative partnerships for future phases. So that just gives us a little bit more more leading way of deciding what's the best method of proceeding with the development of those lands. And then we also have the completed sections, and this will be everything that's been completed will be included in the tactical plan that we sent out. There'll be a separate section. I don't have all the completed items, and those will be updated regularly. There's any questions from the committee? Me or a member from the administration?
Questions, please. Brian?
Um, 1.3.1, look at implementation of minimum property tax levy. What, what is that?
So this was a minimum tax levy is well, essentially what it sounds like, if there are, is if there is vacant property, a lot of, a lot of the time, the problem is that you could sit on that property for a long time with really no financial incentive to move it. So, so lots of communities, what they do is they implement a minimum tax. So, you know, so instead of paying $10, you know, there is a, a minimum charge because that is still property that so instead of paying ten dollars, you know, there is a a minimum charge because that is still property that we have to service in one way, shape or form. Through roads, emergency services. So to implement a minimum tax on the land that has no development on it, just and that often serves as an incentive for uh, developers or individuals not to sit on land for a long period of time and it just don't.
That's what I was hoping for. Thank you.
I don't follow up with that. I'm wondering if that's uh, too narrowly defined. Because just to have a minimum property tax on property um might get us in a lot of trouble with some who've bought the land and uh, and uh, they've actually been trying to do something with it, but economically they can't do something with it, then all of a sudden we're going to increase their tax. It seems like a recipe for uh, um, perhaps getting sued. But maybe part of the problem is that when we sell the land in the first place, the um, you know, they're allowed to sit on it for a long period of time rather than be development ready or something like that. That might be more productive or it might be out of use rather than just do the minimum um property tax levy. I'm just thinking that it's too narrow. It's, you know, comment on that.
For the future. Through through the chair at at this point, no, um. You know, it's not saying that this is a done deal, but this is something that, you know, because it's in our time plan that we bring it forward and we bring it forward and have this discussion at that time. Uh, on the different options available and the appetite of council.
Good, thanks. July.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. In regard to one point one point one zero corporate services to computer review of bylaws. You know, the study came back saying that our policy for bylaws, you know, needed some work, some some were not. So why would not be taken? I I know it's a step there.
That's on.
On her news list. Second one.
So um, so through the chair to councillor Ray, so uh, that one was removed just because I thought it was a little bit too vague to be in direct support of what it was trying to win. And the strategic goal that that was intended to support was that the town develops a clear understanding of barriers to development. And we're to remove barriers. So I just didn't see a direct relevancy into into that strategic goal. So we moved that into our department's business plans instead of.
Okay, good. Thank you, sir.
Another question, please. Fine.
Um, I I I'm a bit surprised or I don't know. Um, I questioned some of these uh, elements that that where budgets required, like the four point two point one point two point three. Uh, where we're talking about uh, putting a new agreement in place with West Fraser for water treatment and and wastewater treatment. Um, uh, I mean, those I guess, are we not moving forward on new agreements because we need a budget and what do we need the budget for? Like, don't we have personnel? Don't we have the ability to do that? I'm just curious why that's labeled as budget required to do that.
Uh, through the chair to councillor Barge, it it's a good point. The the agreement itself. Um, putting that in place won't require a budget. We that that could be amended. I think the the agreement that is ultimately in place will have or is likely to have budgetary implications. So I think that's why we put it. Not to say that we're not actually actively working right now with his ratio and getting that.
Yeah, I was just hoping we weren't not doing something.
We are, we are. Uh, I I think likely, you know, we you know, likely we could probably put in budget if it's just looking at the agreement. So we could make those changes.
Well, I'm good with it like this. If you're moving forward in that regard, it was just my question was, please let's not um, delay moving forward because we need a budget and we can't do that till January.
Yeah, no, we are actively working.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Any more questions? Good, I have one. Um, section one, two, where it says land acquisition for commercial economic opportunities. It's difficult to understand where we're going with that, like with sections uh, one, two, one, one, two, three and one, two, six. Like we have an established land acquisition process. But for what purpose are we requiring land? Because the province doesn't give the land way free, you have to pay for land to get the land. So uh, we're we're just not going out sort of willy nilly to get land. Uh, we need sort of a purpose in order to get land. And that's where this seems to be lacking. Like, what's the purpose? Like, is the purpose uh, highway commercial, you know? Because uh, season need but commercial for other parts of town. Do we need that? Uh, we know that. And uh, perhaps another part of this might be uh, uh, land for the east access to East Drennan in order to develop that side of town. Um, for a variety of reasons. So without clarity, section one point two seems to be kind of aimless. You know, there's no, what exactly are we doing there? Was that going to come maybe further on? It's just buy land. But you got that town doesn't, the province doesn't give that away free, right? It's going to become a purpose.
Through the chair to uh, to the rest of the committee, I I think you're absolutely correct in that point. I don't think we have or council has had a dedicated discussion as to what lands do we need and why do we need it? And what's the vision for for the buildout of ultimately for these lands? So I think that's the very first thing that we need to discuss as council, you know, um. Having, you know, through the strategic planning process, it's been identified that uh, you know, having or being able to acquire land for commercial industrial opportunities is important. Um, but really that's as far as it's gone, where we want to attract land, where where are those lands? Um, you know, where are they best located? What specifically are we trying to attract? And all of those things are the very basics of what we need to do. Um, but first, we we assign some very ambitious timelines. You can see uh, one point one point or one point two point two was in twenty twenty two. And when I asked about it, I said, well, what are we doing and why? Uh, that was the uh, that was the response is we really don't know at this point. Um. So obviously, we are not going to be able to meet the twenty to meet time. We have a lot of work to do with this one. And I think the first step is that, as he said, bring it forward to council, having a discussion. What do we want to do? And what are we prepared to do it? Because out there there's likely a budgetary implications, as you mentioned, if we are going to either annex land or if we are going to look at purchasing land from a province.
Uh, approve. Yeah, to follow up on that, and and I think this is a opportunity with Mr. Russo's new position. You know, taking a look at, you know, those strategic opportunities, you know, uh, because we we just decided we were somewhat landlocked and the fact is that uh, we we don't necessarily have the opportunities to to attract it. So, you know, I I look forward to that conversation to what do we want to attract and where? You know, but I think there's some some opportunities, plus it takes a while. Uh, my understanding is what five to six years or so to even acquire any type of land. So if we're going to start on, then start early, you know, so. That that was my recollection of the strategic plan and I appreciate the fact, yeah, we haven't had that conversation yet, but that's the compromise, as we already said. So, thank you.
Um, any more questions? I I have one there. Um, under um, develop a water meter strategy. We mean, we're not sure we're going to do a water meter strategy. So really, we're going to like review the need to do a water meter strategy and discuss if that's kind of what that means.
Yeah, to the committee. Uh, at this point, there's no decisions made on what it comes to water meters. I think the first thing that we do is we come forward and uh, if when we need to assess the value of doing that, uh, but that was that was in support of the undershirt goals, but council has the full authority. We don't have any direction to approve any water meter strategy. That would have to come forward to council to discuss.
Thanks. Any more on that topic? With that, we'll move on to uh, year review. By our C O as well. Thank you. Long story, I missed it.
Not missed it, but we, there's a motion recommended or or a direction.
Oh, yes, okay.
So if I may.
Yes, please.
Yeah, I I to move that the committee refer administration to forward the tactical plan twenty twenty two and twenty twenty six to every meeting of council, as presumably.
All in favor? All points. Dave, thank you very much for that. Um, that I believe you can move on to uh, you know, two, year review, that's a dollar, please.
Twenty, twenty, it's a dollar. A dollar. It's my mother in law. The the C O.
Thank you, through the chair to the rest of the committee. So um, a few of the things that we've been hearing a little bit on the communication side is that we um, we can do a better job when it comes to providing uh, both the organization council and the public with easily digestible uh, documents to be able to celebrate all the good work that they were. So uh, you know, our our communications team, let uh, you know, this was led by Fuchsia. She's done, I think, a wonderful job in preparing what we're calling a twenty twenty two year in review. And uh, and really what this document is intended to do is just to better inform not only the public, not only council, but also the rest of the organization. It helps break down silos. It just gives all of our our entire organization a better wholesome understanding of all the operations going on in the different areas. I think that's important. Um, we think it's, you know, this is a critical step into uh, creating and maintaining trust with the public. Uh, important council of everything that's going on and challenging some misconceptions that you feel there. So uh, if there's any input that council may have on the twenty twenty two year review, we'd be happy to uh, to answer or to incorporate some changes and uh, the plan is that we will be uh, um, uh, pushing itself uh, in the near future.
Oh, please.
Uh, I, thanks, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. I just think it is a really well-designed document. Uh, really, really well put together, very clear. I and I think really just trying to take a look at it from, you know, a common citizen's perspective. It's a great way to get a lot of information very quickly uh, and sort of find out what's been happening uh, from the town side of things. So, yeah, no, it's good job. It looks great.
Questions?
I do have one question as it relates to active services and it relates back to the report we got at the last meeting. Where there's a comment that our C P Os are spending sixty seven percent of their time on animal control. Is that number correct?
Yes. That's read uh, through the chair to the council or committee. Uh, that is reflected on last year's activities. Sixty seven percent of the time, the one piece officer that we had was spent with animal control and that like that control issues and like.
Wow, that's crazy.
That's into.
Um, and it will have anything.
No, that's uh, I just I'm flabbergasted. Thank you. Right. And thanks for pointing that out because I mean, that's it's really interesting to be able to take that information back um, to citizens who may express concerns about, well, what are our C P Os doing? You know, and and you hear it. It's like, wow, I see them sitting around and they're just, you know, they're just doing this. They're just doing this like, well, no. Over half their time is being spent dealing with animal control issues and that is a lot. Right? So that's a good catch.
Um, more comments, questions? I have a question then. Wonder if um, did the did us um, hiring all those um, new positions like senior management, is that reflected in here? Um, but one of the things we did in my mind in two thousand twenty two is stabilize health. Stabilize uh, management and that sort of thing in the town and before that, that was a bit of a an issue. So is that clear in here someplace?
Uh, through the chair. I think the answer is no. Uh, I I don't think we've touched on uh, touched on that. I think that's a a great point to hit. Uh,
because it's 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 weakness here, right?
Yes, yeah, um. Uh, we we do have it in here that we have appointed a new permanent C O, uh, bringing in further sense of stability to the organization. We did not touch on the uh, all the members of senior.
I think you should.
Okay, uh, through the chair, uh, you know, and I would I would ask uh, Mayor Michaels because that was included in America's message, uh, that we also just make a slight amendment to that message to include senior management. And the importance of that.
That blinking rise and okay.
Um, yeah, I don't know what the will of council is. My train of thought, it could be within the statement that I make, it could be in the document itself. Uh, I don't know if there's appetite to just see this document, uh, give administration the opportunity to amend it with that. Uh, and kind of painted throughout, you know, not just in my message was my thought, but if that's the will of of the committee, sure. But I I was thinking a bit more like, you know, show that like we've shown and focus on other elements within within this.
Right.
Well, I think is the biggest challenge identified through the election uh, as by this council as we got together. So in whatever form um, it's done, I think it should be done in a pretty uh, in a, in a, in an expressive way.
Okay.
Um, myself. Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So if that's the will to allow administration to just add that point uh, at your discretion, what that looks like uh, with uh, a simple motion to uh, refer this to a future committee of the hall, um, would be sufficient or what would be your uh, recommendation to allow you to update this document and come back to us?
Uh, through the chair, I think, you know, through consensus, we we can add that point. I I'm not sure if if council's comfortable with the rest of the document. I don't know if it needs to come back and we could, we could make those uh, those those small amendments, we work that into the document and send it out if council's comfortable with with everything else.
Thank you. Uh, any more comments? Um, I I only had one more. Did we update uh, as much economic information as we needed to? Like I'm thinking of uh, maybe this isn't unique to two thousand twenty two, like a competitive uh, tax rate situation versus other towns. Where the fact that we're going to have a potential surplus, these kind of things, should that be in here?
Uh, through the chair to council, uh, it's a very good point. I asked the same question. Uh, we're coming up with a a summary document of the budget. And as part of that, we were going to make is all those, uh, all of that information. So it was really just a you know, an easy to understand uh, document when it comes to municipal budgeting and and included in there will be things like good news stories such as, you know, our tax rates, you know, what projects are on the go, twenty three and all those kinds of things. So we're working on that right now and we're planning on incorporating a lot of that information in that, in that document.
Good.
Where? Where would that information come?
It's, we're creating kind of a a twenty twenty three uh, budget report. It's just going to be a really simple and easy to understand for really for a public audience. And we're going to include a lot of those statistics in in that document.
Beautiful. I I mean, just as a follow up, what Community Future said, their survey when they were in, that just, that just makes all kinds of sense. Yeah, thank you.
Uh, go ahead. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. If I understood correctly, I'll I'll seek consensus to add uh, more information on senior leadership in the twenty twenty two year review. And then I'd follow up uh, with another motion to accept it for information that'll allow administration to make those changes uh, and uh, move on from today. Thanks.
Okay, all in favor of uh, all in favor of ourselves, uh, first motion? Consensus, yeah. Consensus?
What's the consensus we're voting on?
To direct administration to um, put more information on senior leadership in the twenty twenty two year in review. I'm just waiting for the.
What's that?
I said, you can call it seek consensus on it and then we'll.
All all in favor of Mar- Marcell, um, Marcell's uh, consensus.
Let's wait, sir. Mr. Chair, typically there's an opportunity to discuss.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Sorry, sorry, good point. Very good. I'm new with this. Please uh, so my apologies. I do appreciate the advice. Thank you. I do appreciate the advice. Thank you. Okay, is that reflected, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, any comments or questions or discussion? No comments or questions or discussion?
No.
Stand up. Come on, Albert. All right, we'll vote, we may vote on the next actually first. Okay, all in favor, please put your hand up. All opposed, please put your hand up. Okay. Now, would you like to proceed to your second motion?
Yeah, I'll move that committee accepted twenty twenty two year review document for information.
Any discussions or comments? All in favor? All opposed? Emotions are very, thank you very much. And with that, uh, if I can, maybe we'll go to five or three, Bhutan lands to go on verbal. And somebody in administration.
Uh, thank you to the chair, to all of council. So we're we're coming here today with a a verbal report. Um, it's really just to talk to council a little bit, and I think that's a little bit of direction, a little bit of clarity on administration side. I think helpful for us, you know, we um. You know, there, there is a new grant opportunity that's coming forward. I believe uh mid-March, uh, the application deadline. And that will be for the Rapid Housing Initiative phase or intake number two. Now, those are very aggressive timelines. Um. And if council is in favor of uh. Applying for that grant, you know, we need to have, I think, uh. We need to have that through the will of council. We need to have a little bit of clarity on what exactly our vision is for the Bhutan lands. Um. You know, we. And like I said, these are very aggressive timelines, especially considering we haven't even finished phase one. Um. But this is an opportunity. It's out there. Um. You know, and we we think that because this opportunity and this new phase has been announced, we think we can get an applicant. And then we have to have a a reasonable opportunity of success, especially because we we have the uh. You know, we met all of our deadlines, you know, this uh by all accounts, this. Project has been a great success, so. But before we do that, before we bring it as forward as a formal discussion. At the next regular council meeting, we wanted to, you know, have a discussion here today. So we we're all, we all have some clarity. We can make sure that any. Input from council at this point is incorporated into the uh into the report coming forward for next round of council. So with that, I will turn it over to our project leads, being Winston and Debbie.
Uh, committee, thank you for listening to us this evening about the verbal update. Um, the Bhutan lands became one of the lands that now acquired for the sake of developing it for a very specific demographic group. It started out that seniors would have uh preeminence. Uh, phase two was what we're really talking about tonight because phase one, I know it was not called a constant data, but constantly paid out the question the last time. The where the existing units that were just born. On which lands are there? There was donated lands and there was the the physical portion we purchased. So. Uh, the existing units are full on the donated lands. So so that's a good news story. So we still have pretty much the footprint left. For the lands that were purchased back in twenty eighteen, I think it is. That being said, we at a juncture right now where the second intake of the C M H grant just marched the thirteen. Will require us to make a decision whether we want to continue with the affordable housing component of this. Now, the affordable housing component and the way the grant describes things is that you need to have a, a. A demographic group of not just seniors, that be people, you know, there'd be people under certain threshold of income. They'd be newcomers to Canada, indigenous people. So we have to follow that criteria of which seniors are in there. But if you're looking at the. Our face two and the charrette that was done back in twenty eighteen. It speaks that face two has to comprise of senior duplexes. And and so we at a juncture right now, do we continue to go for a grant that subscribes to a demographic group that's mixed? Or do we want to go ahead and say, okay, we want to stick to the charrette? Now, I will say this, that the charrette wasn't a prescription. It was a best use of the lands. And then to follow up, there's been motions that have been made where talks about private partnerships that we want to develop the land with. So we we wanted to just sort of maybe just pause you this evening and have a really wide conversation about this, that where do we want to take the Bhutan lands? Firstly, we know that the lands were not serviced when we purchased it. We did service the lands for phase one with an option that you have stops up to phase two. But that doesn't mean that if phase two is too bold out, that we don't have internal servicing yet to be done as well, because the design is not completed. So I'll just pause there for a moment and maybe open it to council for any questions and we can ball on to it again.
Um. Uh, through the chair, if I could just add one more thing, we talked a little bit uh. As administration about maybe some of the strategy behind this, but we do know that there was a desire at one point at the time at least that um. There was a desire to do, to look at the development of these lands in partnerships with uh with other organizations, uh private developers. Uh. What we're proposing here today, what we're proposing with applying for that net next intake of the rapid housing initiative. It's very unlikely that we're going to be partnering with a private developer just because of the stipulations that are in that rapid housing initiative grant. It is for um explore affordable housing and it is uh. There, there is not much flexibility there. You know, we have, we've looked at the business case that we've been provided. And we know that that is not going to carry a track for private uh private investment. So. If we are serious about looking at this in partnership with possibly other developers or uh looking at this as, you know, possibly uh. Turning a profit, uh. The affordable housing route is not very uh affordable for the municipality, right? But we do think that it's a. It is a lane that a municipality can take up because, you know, if there's money to be made, that's typically left to to the developers. Affordable housing is a social need for the community. And so we're, we're, we wanted to talk a little bit about that strategy and. What's the the goal of council here and what's uh what demographic and. What are we trying to achieve by the development of these plans?
Glenn.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know what, Glenn, we first start having our talks with Bhutan land. The word senior was always coming up. And I said to council, what does senior mean to you? Is that me? You know, or somebody who's fifty five plus or is that my mom? To me, the conversation I have when I talk about seniors. Are are people my age who are still in my family home, but it's big. And we want to downsize into something smaller. That's what I thought Bhutan was all about. And the people I talked to. Who are living in their big homes and their kids are all gone and they're empty nesters and they want to move out, there's no place for them to go. Getting into them. And that's what I thought Bhutan land was all about. I gotta tell you, I love grants and they're great. They serve the purpose. But there's so many prerequisites for so many, you know, things that we have to meet. In order to get that grant and then the seniors are out of them. In 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 my mind. So I would like to see Bhutan land. Um. A a senior complex, senior community, fifty five plus. And another thing I'm hearing is. Uh, the trend is mixed, mixed seniors, you know, in apartments with young families, blah, blah, blah. That's not what the seniors are saying to me. They have their families. They want that nice, quiet, safe community. Um. So I'm kind of with a seniors community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I guess to build on that a little bit is um. Uh, rushing off because there's another grant available. I don't know if that's the right. Um, strategic move here. And and maybe it's time now to take a step back and and strategically have a look at. Um, what might happen on these lands. Let's make sure we don't end up. Building a concentration that impacts the development of the rest of the lands. Um, and and for me personally, there were some learnings that happened with that. Rapid housing initiative, fact those things are electrically heated. Is uh I was staggered when I found that out. Um, I I think it's time now to step back and have a look at what could be done, it should be done there, me personally. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Yeah, I guess for myself, I like to keep my options open. I think I I'd like to have a look at what our options are as a community. Um. You know, at first blush, I agree with Joanne. You know, I think for a very long time, whether it be more towards uh. Bhutan back in the day uh and some of the development that was initially. Proposed almost ten years ago now over that way, uh, or what opportunities we have um. Or sorry, Baker, not Bhutan. Um. And now what opportunities we have on Bhutan. Uh, I'd certainly like to make sure that we're considering that because that's, you know, it's continued to be an issue. But I think back to what's the one consistent or constant that we've heard is, you know, what's the possibility for accurate senior housing? But also at a price point where it's not going to price some people out of the market. I understand that's difficult, especially in today's realities. Um. But again, I see no harm in exploring what the possibilities are and at least asking that question. I just would like to make an informed decision about what's best for the community. Um. If if the timeline of the grant makes that difficult to make the right choice. I don't see the need to rush into the grant. If it works hand in hand with the grant, well, that's great. But I definitely like to to see what potential there is for developing the right way out there. So.
Trevor, please. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, yeah, I'm hesitant because I I think the biggest thing was we as a. I thought as a council, we were really in the. Desire to be in the home ownership business and the running of it. It's more the partnerships that make part of it. And my concern is what's what CEOs uh said in regards to it. Be a difficult sell for private developers and others, and we then would be in that home ownership, you know, the. With having evergreens onboard with uh uh with those with the first initiative in phase one was a selling point for it, but moving forward, we don't have that. Uh, I'm not sure I'm comfortable with that yet. Um, you know, and and as Council Ray said as well, those timelines are, you know, we're very. Limited into what we can have in those houses and can we sustain it? So, yeah, I'd have to have more information on that. Um, you know, that being said though, I mean, yeah, we'd have to have also that exploration. I agree with Council Ray's too, is that. You know, what those options are for seniors, but what what cost, you know, and are they going to be affordable for them? Because, you know, we go in and building and they're not, they're not principal. So. I think there's a lot of still question marks beside it before going forward at this point. Um, but those are my thoughts. Thank you. Hubert, please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I have a question and then potentially follow. Um, I guess my question is if there were an additional. Uh, partial phase or full phase of affordable housing. Where would it be on phase two? How much would it take up of phase two?
Uh, due to Chair Winston could talk a little bit more about it, but uh. What we have discussed is just based on the amounts of funding available and the fact that we've already received funding is we'd be looking at the half. Half build out of base two. Uh, which is the complexes. We'd be looking at three complex units, six total housing units. Uh. Just with that, and it's a good point that's been brought up by council and we've talked about it in early years. Uh, because. We can go for all of base two. We think it's very unlikely that we would be given the lion's share of this grant, especially considering that we've. Already been awarded uh two point three from C M H C. Um, but it's a, it's a good consideration that if we're only building a half base two, what's the rest of that base going to look like? And maybe the two affordable and another uh strategy may not mesh very well, like, you know, uh. Well, it's a good example, the affordable housing and seniors in the in one. One phase that's going to be uh. It's going to be difficult for them to mesh well. Uh. Let's thank them after that.
Uh, through the chair, I don't have more to add, but to CEO Panasik has said. But the idea was is that I believe that is the subscription right now, that they're discharging twenty municipalities that is applying for it. Now, not that that is shying us away from, but if you look at the scoring matrix for C M H C, if you have already been given a grant, you'll lose X amount of points. It's fine, you'll lose X amount of points. But on the other side, we have a leg up where we've done a demonstrable project. Where internet's delivering, get favorably by other municipalities. How did you do it? Who did you use? All these good things that how's it going for you? So it's on that basis that I that I said to C O that we're probably better off not to try and bolt on phase two one hundred percent because. Do we have the demand? Yes, the demand is there right now. But do you really want to take up all that space of base two? For affordable housing. Then at the same time, if you have all of the affordable housing, and this I say respectfully, if we did want to go private. P three partnerships, you're basically having a mixed use that maybe um somebody that's going to pay three hundred, two hundred thirty thousand per unit. May not want sort of that mix of of residents and not disrespect anyone. Um, so that's why I wanted to keep it to a small amount of three million dollars, six units. Include the site servicing as part of that, which is probably another five hundred thousand and seventy thousand dollars, et cetera, based on some of the information we have. So that was the thinking, not to lose the grant, but to install it without food out there. As an option, or we don't do it right now. We look at a clean canvas. Okay, we've got affordable housing, ten units now. We'll be having it shortly. Uh, we look at clean canvas, our best to harness this land for the whole. Could it be all of seniors? Could it be a combination of seniors? And maybe commercial complex and maybe include a private entity to help us because um. Just based on my own experience is that typically municipalities should not be in the business of land developing. Uh, then we are competing with land developers. However, this is a unique place. We still have an opportunity to call it a P three. Maybe we can go on and I'm going to be bold about what I'm going to say. Go out and test the market in a respectful way and say. That we've got this great piece of land, but some constraints on it. Yes, we all know that. And then come back and. Take what we get from the market and make the best. That's going to inform us so much more. And also, if you look at the custom for all that council, we just look at the the storage units. That idea was put in there as a best use because they knew that that progression of ball out would be fifteen years in the making. So let's get some incomes through that storage units. But strictly speaking, we're competing with a business here that's got storage units in town. So I think we we want to put our best foot forward and maybe say, is it a public private partnership? I know there's a lot of details in that, but that's major one of our considerations.
Did you want to follow?
Uh, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Um, I'm allowed to ask questions, so I'll ask a question. Were we committed to the original charrette? Like, like, there there was originally a plan on how to do things here and. That plan may or may not be uh as relevant as it was when it was first built and it was built by a planner who didn't have money at stake and maybe necessarily. Know the community as well as some of the. You know, developers in town. So is that original charrette what we're going to follow with uh some of these developments as they're going?
Through the chair, I can take that one. We're by no means bound by. The charrette, right? That's a very high level conceptual process. Um. It can have as much or as little weight as council would like. Um. You know, that was built at a different time. Uh, it would be council will be built and and where.
Okay, thanks. Right.
Yeah, uh, I think in hearing Winston sort of echo what some of our possible. Um, directions might be like to simply advertise to. Uh, to the development community and say, hey, look, we've got this land. You know, what do you see as a potential here? What are the opportunities for partnership and future development? Based on what you know about the town and just seeing, you know, what what specialists in the field can bring back to us with with ideas. Again, especially given the the. Again, especially given the the climate of things economically, I'd love to see that. Um because then I think there's more chance for community buy-in. Locally with our our developers who know the community and have an idea of what our needs are. Again, I think that's relying more heavily on their expertise in the private field than us trying to dictate what we think. A vision should be when they might have a a vision that's just better than ours, or you know what, it's more well informed. I'm always open to see that. Thanks.
Russell, uh thank you, Mr. Chair. Hypothetically, uh if there was appetite for the six units that you had spoke. About what percentage of the remaining land would that be? I don't have the 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 sheet in front of me, but let's say it was just a partial amount done, but of all the phases. Ballpark, is this ten percent of the land?
And come here through the chair, I swear I can probably look it up quickly, but it's not going to be. Under ten percent, they'll probably all the between ten and just shy of twenty percent on the land, okay, perfect.
So my follow up. I I'm I'm open to either direction, one, though, if if we want to revisit the sharet and. Find out what we want, we should do that very fast. And it should be the top priority, but I'm also not against using fifteen percent of the land. If administration recommends going down this path that we could. Use some of these funds for servicing and offset costs for future development of the remaining eighty-five percent. Of the land, but I'd have to be sold on that, right? And I guess my question to administration, if there's appetite to. Potentially go down a six unit approach, receive grant money. How soon could that be in front of council for us to decide? Um because that's kind of what we're debating today. Do we want to go down one path or do we want to revisit and restructure the whole threat? Figure out what we as a council want to do, which. I think there's an appetite, or I think both are. Are optional, but what does administration recommend with the six units and what does that look like if there is appetite from council to explore that?
So through the chair, and once you can uh. Jump in, uh we'll have to look at whether the grant will be able to service future cases. I don't know if that's a possibility, you know, when it comes to our recommendation, we can certainly. We can certainly do this, but it's really going to be depending on council's vision for what goal do we want to achieve, and if our goal as council is that we want. A need and that we are trying to fill is to have affordable housing in in the community. Then I would absolutely recommend that we be aggressive and we go after this grant. If if we have a different vision for what housing needs are out there, or if we believe that we have. Accomplished our goal within the ten affordable housing units. Uh and I would say that we were probably much better off to take a step back, take a look at what our options are and uh and try to. Pursue pursue another avenue that would just better accomplish council's goal, but if that was a big reason for coming today, I think is to. To get the sense from council of what what are we trying to accomplish here? Is it built out by any means necessary? You know, are we trying to uh, you know, accommodate for certain? You know, for seniors or affordable housing. Um for mixed use developments, um you know, there's a lot of. There's a lot of outcomes that are possible here, and I think we're really taking our direction. Council, what we're trying to accomplish, and based on that, we can uh provide a recommendation.
Thank you.
Um Joanne, please.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair. I know there's no direction on the floor right now, but I just have to say. If you've read that book, How to Kill a Community, or Thirteen Ways to Kill a Community, just get rid of all your seniors. Have them all move. And as your seniors move, they're taking away their history, they're taking away their money. They're they're taking away so much from this community. People in the Hinton who are older, they want to stay, they feel safe here, they have a doctor, they have a hospital. They know they're banker, they know they're a drugstore person. There are so many reasons for people to stay in this community. And I'll tell you, we we built our ten and we're not going to stop at ten affordable. Homes, we've got ten, so we will continue, I'm sure. We've done nothing with our fifty-five plus. That I can remember. So I um. You know, I I was certainly. Not so well, I want to go, but here's a question I have. We put in extra money for infrastructure to. Go into phase two. It's there, okay? The infrastructure is there. For phase two to tie into it, is that correct? Well, Ted, thank you.
All right.
That was my question, actually, is my understanding was the servicing was the price it was because it was going to allow the 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 development of phase two.
Thank you. Chair, I just made an asset clarifying question for Winston, was what percentage of that servicing cost was covered under the grant or it was? Provided by?
Through to the chair to see, and I said, madam, zero dollars were allocated under servicing. Council, the venture, then a month of a lot, eight hundred thousand that covered the entire servicing component. What we are proposing now, as we talked briefly, CEO, this afternoon is that. We all should go for this grant, we will include the servicing component for the internal as part of our grant. Because our stake in the game is the land that we have. So that would wait till about roughly twenty percent equity skin in the game, whereas in the past before we were on boarded. Uh the grant was already in motion and we just did the finishing touches going from twenty to eight units. That was what the application was based on.
Uh Trevor? Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Um just a quick clarifying question, maybe, but we're talking about the Bhutan lands for this possible grant. Is there any other? Area that could potentially? Houses and and not at the Bhutan lands currently right now that we. You know, like if we weren't to miss out on those six units, is there another area we could look at? And maybe there isn't a, it's it's just a thought I had is, you know, because I I'm with the rest of us, I don't know if I want to take. X amount of percentage out of phase two, you know, is it going to mix with the next half or whatever it will be? I'm just wondering if there's another opportunity because I I do like the idea of those units in our community. I'm just not sure if it's. This is the place for it.
Uh through the chair, I I think at this point, we were only looking up Bhutan lands, and we don't know if it would fit necessarily with another area. We can certainly do. Take a look at that. I I'm not familiar with all the town old lands and where this would be most appropriate off the top of our heads right now.
Okay, thank you, just a thought. My my question is um. What's a reasonable level of affordable housing for a small town like us to have? And what are we going to target? Like last time, Chris and Chambers came in there to talk about uh the portable housing provided in this town, it was. In the two to three hundred unit range, which for a town with three thirty-five hundred residents was uh. Five, ten percent, which seems like an awful lot. So uh what what are what what where where are we with that? And are there some targeted things that we have, we don't have in this town that maybe we should be looking at? Um you know, like, for example, uh group homes for to say to people stuff like that that we don't have. That other towns do have, so are we? Do we want to have a want to have a bit of a strategy while we're doing this portable housing or do we stand with other towns? Or we just want to just keep showing to? On in the future.
Uh to the chair, to all the uh to the rest of the committee, so a lot of the. A lot of the information we've been basing our decisions off of on this project has been based on a twenty thirteen affordable housing gap analysis. So. Through that gap analysis, they they found out of the four forty-five hundred. Uh housing units in it, and they they found that twenty-seven percent actually earned under the threshold uh that required them. For affordable housing, the biggest need were was one bedroom units. Uh that was that was the biggest need uh that I believe it was bachelor's suite at that two bedroom unit, so they have taken a look at that. But that is a twenty thirteen um analysis I've reached out, we're trying to find more recent. Available data, we reached out to the Evergreen Foundation, they didn't get back to us, but we have a lot of the information. The the information based uh on the sharet was based on that twenty thirteen analysis and a lot of the. Information that we've provided to the grant, I believe, is. Then uh off of that analysis as well.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks. My question was answered.
Okay, any other questions? Um I have one more than just a comment. I'm a bit reluctant uh to pursue the rapid housing uh initiative. Because I um because I found it restrictive, and because it was so restrictive. It resulted in us building something that was uh. My, it was affordable for people that are living there, but the price per unit was so high that I don't think that uh. First, an average person buying property would pay that amount of money, so that's that's what I think the restrictions did for the price of that. So if we're going to repeat that, I'm not that keen on that, but anyways, thank you.
Um I guess the question I have is. Is is it possible and then is it something that administration under certain circumstances could or would recommend? So if we're not pursuing a grant for the remainder of phase two. Um and we were seeking some partnerships with, I don't know, private development. Where I guess. I don't know, I'm trying to figure out how this plays out, so correct me if I'm wrong anywhere. So we're going to go to private industry and we're going to try and entice them to come and join a partnership with the town to do. A specific vision for a project, whether that be, you know, there. They lead the artistic side of, you know, designing and organizing whatever that high level vision is. Uh as a partner with the town. Is is just having the project enough of an enticement to bring private partners to the table? Uh or does the town then have to pursue? Offsetting some of that cost as a partner, whether it be by by way of. Waving certain offsite levies or, you know, trying to offset costs that hopefully translate to the end purchaser. Like, is that is that unreasonable? Does that sound right? Or, you know, sort of, am I off in my field with that? Chain of of thought.
Uh Mr. Russo wants to jump in. I I would say that I think you're. I think you nailed it. I think depending on the appetite for private development, and I don't know the answer to that right now. Um but we can. If we are looking at this partnership. Then we then I think that it is a reasonable expectation from our private partners that we would come to the table with some value. And more more so than just a high level concept design for the sharet, I think that there would be an expectation that we would be willing to. And that could be. Waving a certain fees that could be um. You know, providing the land possibly at less than market, it could be a lot of different things. We don't know those answers yet, but it's not unreasonable to. Uh to assume that that's what the expectations would be for it in the series.
So if I may, Mr. Chair, honestly, I think that's exciting then. So if you, you know, you've brought this verbal to us and said, hey, what's your? What's your high level vision sort of with this moving forward? I think it's good because it allows us to be agile. Uh to maybe do a little interface with both the public and our development community. And say, well, what are your visions? What what do you have in mind? What do you think? This patch of land could produce that would be of benefit to the community because the people we're going to ask are people who live here. Right? They're familiar with the community, they have skin in the game. Uh I'd be excited to see what kind of answers we get back.
Um please.
Yeah, through the chair to to the committee, we've had, we've seen over the last two to three years, there's been a lot of emerging trends happening in our community. So I think it's a good juncture at this point in time to test the private public sector market. And and to your point, Coach, we're going to start, we we do have developers in town, in my view, based on my experience. That would come up with ideas that may impress us in terms of making a survival project. One, we can have certain guidelines in there what we want to see, so seniors is one of the key aspects. We've heard that you've got a shortage for student housing, not that I want to mix seniors with students, but I mean, that's not a good mix, but. What I'm trying to say is to say you could blend a bunch of stuff here. That could have returned on the investment, any private investor, I'll just say this out loud, they are not going to come to this if there's not a dollar to be made. They have to group the cost, however, it helps us to get over the finish line. And to expedite the ball out instead of twenty-five years, and maybe we're in the inner for eight to ten years. And so I I'm excited to think what we could get back. And then we have a good runway of options and opportunities.
Thank you.
Any more questions or comments? I joined you.
I just got a quick one, and thank you so much. This is probably really premature, but if we did build a phase two. Would we be linking infrastructure into phase three in anticipation that we want to get going on that someday?
That would be good if we can do that through to the chair, however, just the way the infrastructure layout is, we will have to bring it from different locations. And the one thing that the the sharet did not fully address based on my reading last night was one is that we haven't looked at our internal capacity of existing services. So if we really go forward, we're going to make sure that our existing services can actually take that. For all that this new development is bringing, that has not been tested.
Are you, I'm sorry, may I, are you saying like lift stations?
Yeah, I I hope we don't get to a lift station situation, but. So so just a full ball out, right? So if we go to a developer, we want to make sure we have a master plan for this entire ball out for Bhutan lands. It's just we as the town haven't, I think, uh. Our resident US advice that that's been done, but we can check on that, but these are things that I've discovered wasn't tested yet, so it's. A high level overview, so back to council, the Taylor's point, it's not casting, so we have, we can rearrange this canvas to suit us.
Any more questions or comments? Um so to the CEO, did you get what you need of this code of this conversation?
Uh through the chair, yes, I did, actually, this was helpful. Um I I guess a question for the group um. You know, is there an appetite to consider the grant that uh is due mid-March? If if there is, if there is still a possibility, we'll bring out a report forward at the next meeting if. You know, the end of, you know, committee of the whole at this point says that. We're not interested in a grant at this point, we want to take our time, we want to explore other options. Uh then we probably start times administration putting that together for council to consider.
I'll put that question to the group if somebody wants to try to get a consensus like that.
Well, I'd like to see consensus that we not pursue that grant. Um I know it takes an immense amount of time. Do that, and I think really what we do. By virtue of moving forward with that is we paint ourselves in a corner for development and rest of that land. There's a lot that can go on there. I think it's time now to have a look at what we could do.
Did you get the? Did you get the wording or what doesn't work?
Sure, you're the boss.
That we not pursue a, what's the brand called? At this time for March?
Correct.
Perfect.
Any comments or questions on that, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm I'll be in support of the proposed direction. Uh I think it's important we don't lose sight of the original vision that council today had. Uh when uh when the direction was given to administration to go ahead, purchase of those lands. I I think it's important we continue to move forward, so I'll be supporting this, but that does leave me to question, Nate. Uh to administration, I guess, is there any direction that administration needs to? Move forward regarding development of the future places of the Bhutan lands?
Through the chair to all the committee, I I don't believe that there's any further direction that's needed, I think through our tactical finance identified. That that is a priority of administration is to look at the the development and build outs of the Bhutan land, so that is. That has been identified as one of the tactics in order to accomplish also strategical, so I think we're comfortable with that. I think at this point in time was. Um in order to facilitate that development for future phases, we need to. Uh determine exactly what we want, and then we need to uh uh go out and find out exactly how we can do it, so this will be a process, this will be in front of council. Um I think in short order. So this will be a process, this will be in front of council, um, I think in short order.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Any other quick questions? Okay, uh, with that, we're gonna seek consensus that uh. The committee directed administration not to pursue the rapid housing grant for the Bhutan lands. All those in paper? All those opposed? Okay, that's concluded. Are there any other comments on that topic before we move on? I had one. Um, seen as the small housing uh was, it was put on, um, what was the question, the comment, donated plans? Is that gonna figure into the grand opening and a big thank you for whoever donated this land, so you see? Okay.
Yeah, uh, yeah, through the chair, we'll we'll make sure that uh. Uh, during that ribbon cutting, we'll prepare for their hand, the stage and all of that, and real building communications around that.
You know, because that's significant information to council, that's the address I heard that, so that was one of the needed plans. That's fantastic. Okay, any more comments? Okay, we'll move on to reporting and we'll start with the council reports. Um, who would like to go first? Ryan?
I have nothing to report, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Ryan.
Uh, I guess, uh, while I was away last week, I did um attend the uh Community Futures Investment Review Committee. And the only thing I wanted to say, and this is really uh one of those services that Community Futures uh does provide to the community, is that. Um, in the current climate, the uncertainty that's out there, um, the uncertainty as it relates to the market and the interest rates. The banks have really stepped back from funding uh small business uh in any way. And uh, the 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 activity that uh Community Futures begun to see in that regard is really significant. So um, our support of of Community Futures, um, at a time like this, really important, we're starting to see some of the. Results of that.
Thank you. Albert?
I have nothing to report, Mister Chair.
Well.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Last Friday, um, F C S S held a very, very successful family dance. I wasn't able to be there, um, you know, for more than a few minutes, but it was just great. And more than I'd have my historical meeting, and that's it.
Uh.
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mister Chair. Um, uh, the community dance, yeah, I just wanted to comment on that. I wasn't able to uh spend half the evening there, it was uh very successful. There was a, I don't know how many people attended, but the the hall was full. Um, there was a lot of kids there dancing around and uh the hidden or the Youth Advisory Council. Uh, donated, some of them donated their time on so, was there uh to uh provide the games. Uh, so the kids had a lot of fun doing some games uh there, so uh, yeah, great job to the F C S S crew there. Um, and the only other thing is, is I'm looking forward to on Thursday, uh, attending emerging trends in municipal law. I've attended them in the past and I always find them quite interesting to see what kind of legal. Uh, matters have come up in the municipalities over the twenty twenty-two and understanding some of those uh, those uh. Legal issues and bring that back to the Q R community to try to avoid, so uh, looking forward to that virtually, of course, uh, you know, so. Which is great, because then we don't have to travel and sit, so, thank you. Where was the family games? It was at the Hidden Center. Okay, thank you.
Much love. Nothing to add, Mister Chair.
Then I have nothing to add. C L, uh, do anything?
Uh, thank you, to the chair, might be cheating, but I will use my twenty twenty-two year review. More to my reports, uh, you know, the other thing that I'll just share with council and um. Big, a big thing that we've been doing kind of behind the scenes, building out those business plans that I've referred to, uh, you know, with. With the tactical plan, I think being where it needs to be and having an update with everybody's input into it. Um, you know, we will be bringing that forward to uh the next regular council meeting. And then the next stage, and I think achieving organizational alignment is those business plans. And we would like to share those, those are our operational in nature, but we do think that it's important that council be aware of. All the things on all of the department's plates and it's specific to the year of twenty twenty-three is what we are committing. This administration to accomplish uh our key performance indicators through departments and all of the different initiatives that. We are committing to accomplish, so uh, that's been a big initiative, but I think a really important one to uh for everybody to have that. That alignment, um. Actually, and that's it.
Thank you. Um, that uh seems to conclude the open portion of the meeting, and it looks like we have a closed session for mutual forms. Well, you'd like to move to, we go into closed session with a seven minute thing. Uh, all those in favor, all those opposed?